I call the Planning and Zoning Meeting for January 18th, 2023 to order. Would you please this time rise and stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have the roll call, please?
Jim Harris. Matthew Mitchell.
Here.
Gabriel Medley.
Here.
David Diaz.
Here.
Susanna Ballard.
Here.
Joan De Zero.
Here.
Dean Hatch. Paul Laird.
Here.
Tiffany Wilson.
Here.
And Lonnie Stevenson.
Here.
Thank you. The alternates are Mr. Stevenson, Mr. Mitchell, and Mr. Hatch. Mr. Stevenson, would you come up and join us, please? And please sign in when you come up. At this time, we need to approve the minutes from two meetings. I'm sorry. Correspondence and announcements staff, please.
Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners, thank you very much. Just one thing to announce, the planning, excuse me, the City Council meeting on January 10th, they heard the Grand Island Estates items that the Planning Commission recommended. The 13-acre parcel with the single-family RE zoning, the general plan, and the rezone PD got approved. The five-acre piece with the RM multiple-family zoning, that applicant withdrew those requests, so that one did not go through. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we need to approve the minutes from two meetings, the December 7th and the December 21st meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? And if not, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion for Ms. Ballard is second.
A second.
Second from...
Tiffany Wilson.
Tiffany Wilson. Take the vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. The structure of the meeting will allow me to, the staff, to present an item. The commission may ask staff questions, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to present. Commissioners may have questions for the applicant, and then I will open the discussion to the audience. We ask that you like to address the commission, please do so, but there is a limit, one trip to the podium per topic, and three minutes to speak. Please spell your last name for the record when you come up to speak. I will then close the discussion and bring the item back to staff and ask for their recommendation. The commission will then hear a motion, discuss, and make a recommendation to the City Council for their final consideration. First item on the agenda, item ID 23-3620. Staff, please give your description, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman and Vice Chair Commissioners, thank you. This is a request for a minor amendment to the future land use map of the city's general plan for 740, 730, 720, 710, 700, and 670 Delta Drive, and 681, 691, and 701 McCulloch Boulevard South, tract 2222, block 5, lots 1 through 9, to change to future land use designation from neighborhood commercial to high-density residential. The subject properties consist of a block with nine vacant undeveloped lots, and measures a total of 2.16 acres. It's located just northwest of the intersection of McCulloch Boulevard South and Chimauevee Boulevard, an alley abuts the southern boundary of the property. The subject property and the properties to its south across the alley are zone limited commercial, C1, with two commercially developed lots and 19 vacant lots total. The properties to the west, north, and east are all zone two-family residential, R2, and developed with residential uses. The general plan land use map, which is the subject of this request, shows all the surrounding lots have a general plan designation of neighborhood commercial, but are developed with single-family and two-family homes around the south, excuse me, to the west, the east, and the north. The two lots to the south are developed with commercial uses, and the bounds are undeveloped to the lots across the alley. The applicant's letter of intent asks to amend the city's general plan land use map from neighborhood commercial to high-density residential to facilitate development of multiple-family project on the property. The general plan amendment is the first step in this process. The second step is a planned development rezone for the property, which accompanies this general plan amendment request. The design of the development is proposed to complement and address the general plan, which recognizes there is vacant private property boarding residential neighborhoods that needs infill development. The requested high-density residential designation allows primary uses such as attached single-family residences, townhomes, patio homes, apartments and condos, and cohousing and live-work dwellings, as well as high-density planned development communities. The high-density residential land use map should be adjacent to corridors such as McCulloch Boulevard, as it is in this case. Again, the high-density residential designation allows a density range of 10 to 20 units per acre, but higher densities may be approved through the planned development rezone process. And as mentioned earlier, a planned development rezone for the property accompanies this general plan request. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions you may have. Thank you.
Does the commission have any questions for staff? Is the applicant present? Please state your name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mac Hall with Iris Development Services. I'm here to answer any questions you have on a general plan map amendment.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing and open to the audience. Any audience members want to address this issue? Seeing none, we'll close that and bring the item back to staff for your recommendation.
Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners, thank you very much. Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for land use action 23-3620, a minor amendment to the future land use map of the city's general plan for 740, 730, 720, 710, 700, and 670 Delta Drive, and 681, 691, and 701 McCulloch Boulevard South, tract 2222, block 5, lots 1 through 9, to change to future land use designation from neighborhood commercial to high-density residential. As a reminder, this item will go to the City Council's February 14th meeting with the commission's recommendation. Thank you.
I have a question, staff. Did this require neighborhood meetings to be held?
Yes, sir, it did. There was a neighborhood meeting held. It was a dual-purpose meeting for this general plan amendment, as well as the forthcoming planned development rezone.
And do traffic studies have to be completed when we do something like this?
It depends upon the scope of the work. If feels like our Public Works Department feels there's a need for a traffic study, they will ask for one. These requests were routed to all the different departments, including Public Works Engineering, and we did not receive any comments and objection or any additional comment or request or requirements for traffic study.
Thank you. Any Commissioner questions for staff?
I have a question. On the changing it to high-density residential, what is the height limit for that zoning?
Thank you for the question. The height limit comes into play during the zoning portion of it. The general plan designations don't have a specific height because they're generally, they're general designations. The height will come in with the rezoning, which is the next item, dependent upon the requested rezone.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. I just had a question going from the neighborhood commercial to the density residential. One of the things that's been coming up even at City Council is the water issue that we have right now that we're in Tier 2. Was that looked at with this request and the general plan?
That would be, again, something that would be commented on when the requests for review go out. I know the city has adequate water that's allocated to the city. Those other cutbacks in water usage and all would be independent of whatever's going on with this project.
Any other questions? Well, this time we're looking for a motion to approve or disapprove.
I make a motion to approve the minor amendment, or 23-3620, minor amendment to the future land use map of the city's general plan for 740, 730, 720, 710, 700, 670 Delta Drive, and 681, 691, and 701 McCulloch Boulevard, tract 222, block 5, lots 1 through 9, to change future land use designation from neighborhood commercial to high-density residential.
Motion to approve by Ms. Wilson. Is it a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. De Zero. We're ready for the vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
The next item is ID 23-3622, a request for a planned development rezone for 740, 730, 720, 710, 700, and 670 Delta Drive, and 681, 691, and 701 McCulloch Boulevard South, tract 2222, block 5, lots 1 through 9, from limited commercial C1 district to multiple-family planned development RM-PD district, allowing a maximum density increase from 20 dwelling units per acre to 41 dwelling units per acre, and allowing a five-foot encroachment into the required, the required 15-foot front setback for vehicle parking abutting in McCulloch Boulevard. Mr. Morris.
Honorable Vice Chair Commissioners, thank you very much. This is the same subject property as the previous general plan amendment. The subject property consists of a block with nine vacant undeveloped lots and measures just over two acres. It's located just northwest at the intersection of McCulloch Boulevard South and Chimauevee Boulevard, an alley abuts the southern boundary of the property. Here's the track map. There are currently two 16-foot-wide public utility easements that run through the properties, and the lots are currently have, they currently have building and parking in common areas designated, but they do not have an approved parking in common master plan. The utility easements and the parking in common issues will be addressed as part of the property's future development. The zoning map is shown here. The subject property and the other properties to the south across the alley are currently zone C1, limited commercial. There are two commercially developed lots and 19 vacant lots. The properties to the west, north, and east are zone two-family residential, R2, and developed with single-family residential and two-family units. And then there's single-family R1 zoning, abuts the R2 zoning, kind of around it, surrounding it. The requested rezone is from R1 to RM multiple-family. It's for high-density residential uses. This type of zoning is typically buffered from single-family, the R1, by R2 or and/or R3 zoning. The existing R2 zoning acts as a buffer from the R1 zoning to this requested RM zoning. Therefore, the proposed RM zoning conforms with the standard zoning practice. Here is the site plan submitted by the developer applicant, and the applicant's letter of intent suggests that the planned development rezone will help create a mix of single-family, two-family, and multiple-family lots in the area, which will help increase the chances of developing the remaining commercial lots to the south across the alley. The design of the development is proposed to complement and address the general plan, which recognizes there is vacant prime property or private property abutting residential neighborhoods that needs infill development. The property owner is a local construction contractor who feels the apartment building development will help fill the need of the community for more workforce housing. The units are proposed to be long-term leases only with no short-term rentals. The applicant's narrative and general plan, general development plan describe a three-story, 87-unit, multiple-family apartment building. The apartments are a mix of 57 one-bedroom, 21 two-bedroom, and nine three-bedroom units. This results in a density of just over 40 units per acre. The maximum density for the RM zoning district is 20 units per acre. Therefore, the applicant is asking for a planned development rezone to increase the density up to 41 units per acre. This proposed increase in density is supported by the high-density residential general plan designation that you just recommended approval on. Here's an overlay of the property on the adjacent neighborhood. The nearest residences are across Delta Drive in McCulloch Boulevard. The subject property's minimum building setbacks along these streets vary from 10 feet to 15 feet. That's the minimum that's required per the code. However, the building is showing a setback about 50 feet from both Delta Drive and McCulloch Boulevard property lines. This is more than what is required, and will result in about 130 feet between the new apartment buildings and the nearest residences across Delta or McCulloch. The building elevations are shown here. They are, show a three-story building with varied parapet roof heights. The units will have outdoor patios and balconies. The building exterior is shown as a mix of white and gray stucco with gray split block. The building will have a number of alcoves and recesses to break up any long expanses of exterior walls. Now, the RM zoning district allows building heights up to 30 feet. The existing C1, the property is now, allows 25 feet in height. The general development plan shows a building height of 28 feet from the property's maximum grade, which is the grade of McCulloch Boulevard near the northern edge of the property. So, this lot, these lots slope down from that maximum grade at McCulloch. Therefore, the developer will dig down about 12 feet to help level the site from the McCulloch Boulevard elevation. This results in a building parapet height of just over 39 feet from the finished floor of the building, but only 28 feet from the McCulloch Boulevard elevation, which is where the height is officially measured. So, no building height exception is requested or required for this. The parking for the project is shown as 87 covered parking spaces, 15 uncovered spaces, and 18 visitor spaces. The proposed number and types of parking spaces meet the Development Code standards. However, as part of this planned development, the applicant is asking for a parking setback exception for the spaces fronting on McCulloch Boulevard. Due to this slope on the lot, these parking spaces will be below the level of McCulloch Boulevard, and the reduced parking setback was not anticipated to be a major impact. They're requesting that they, the parking spaces be set back 10 feet from the property line rather than the standard of 15 feet. Landscaping is also shown on the plan. The required number of trees, shrubs, decorative rock, ground cover, as well as overall percentage of landscaping meet the Development Code standards. The required 10-foot landscape buffer is shown along all the street right-ofways. No landscaping exceptions are needed or requested. That concludes staff's presentation. Open for any questions, and the applicant is also here. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? I have a question if no one else does. So, as Ms. De Zero mentioned, we sat at a City Council meeting last week, and there was a lot of talk about water and future restrictions and the type of, the type of plants and so forth. So, is it going to be, I know we talked about trees and so forth. Are we going to be using low-water type maintenance plans that are going to be required? Or is it just suggested for this, the type of development?
The city does have suggested plant types, and we ask that those be adhered to when we're doing design review for projects like this. Typically, it's the desert plants. If you see acacia and palaveria, typically is what we see. But yes, they will be low-water usage plants. We'll make sure they're among the, those that are recommended.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. Stevenson.
So, to understand if these lots were going to be developed as they were originally zoned on McCulloch Boulevard with the height restrictions and what the developer is planning, the proposed building will not exceed if someone was developing those lots as originally zoned on commerce, on, on McCulloch Boulevard?
The lots, if they're developed individually, each one, one by one, the existing C1 zoning allows up to 25 feet in height, and that's measured from each lot.
Right.
When lots are combined as the one, then it's measured from that combined, the combined lots, and then that height is established based on the combined lots. So, in the, under C1, there would be at least 20, they could be at least 20, maximum 25 feet tall if this property was not rezoned.
I have a question.
Ms. Ballard.
If they're going to dig down along McCulloch Boulevard so they don't exceed the 30-foot, what will the height of the building be on, on the end of Delta Drive?
It'd be about 40 feet, just 39 something is what the plans are showing.
So, it would be 28 feet or so at the front of McCulloch Boulevard, but you'd be up to close to 40 feet.
Correct, because they'd dig down about 12 feet to level the site is what the proposing.
Any other questions by Commissioners to staff? Seeing none, is the applicant present? Please state your name for the record.
Good morning, I'm Mac Hall with Iris Development Services. Just go back to what was previously stated by Vice Commissioner, that we did have the neighborhood meeting, and one of the big concerns was, we originally had an entrance off of Delta on the south side, and per recommendation and discussion with the neighborhood, we moved the entrance as close to McCulloch as possible. We shifted over to the alleyway to provide a secondary entrance, try to keep the traffic as close to McCulloch as possible and not wrap all the way around Delta. But I'm here to answer any other questions that you have for this development.
Any other questions, Commissioners to the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, open to the public. Anyone from the public want to address this issue? Please come up, state your name for the record.
My name is Steve Bernier. My question is, I'm concerned about the parking. If you're having so many units in such a condensed area, it doesn't look like there's going to be enough public parking for guests coming in and tenants.
Mr. Morris, what is the code required parking requirement?
Parking requirements for this property are one and a half parking spaces for every unit, and then guest parking at a rate of one per every five units. Is, the number of parking spaces is based on, required parking spaces is based on the number of bedrooms per unit. The 87 units that they're proposing with the mix of one, two, and three bedrooms, what they're proposing here, the 87 parking spaces, covered parking spaces meets the requirement, and 15 uncovered. So, that total is 102 parking spaces. Those are required for development itself, and then the 18 visitor parking spaces are the one for every five required parking spaces. You need at least one covered parking space per unit, and that's why there's 87 covered. And then the 15 uncovered are for the extra two- and three-bedroom type units, and then there's 18 visitor parking spaces. So, that does meet the minimum requirements.
Okay. Any other?
I have a question. Is there going to be any limitation to, because these are going to be usually occupied by people that have more than one vehicle, so therefore their extra parking would need to be on the street? Is there any restrictions against them parking on Delta Drive?
Delta Drive, like any other street in town, you're allowed to park, legally park on the right-of-way, as long as you're not causing a traffic hazard, as long as it's not signed otherwise that no parking or something. So, like any other area in town, you're allowed to park in the right-of-way as long as you, again, it's not allowed or it's causing a traffic hazard.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Thank you. Any other public comments? Thank you. Please come up, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Patty Holder. I'm, there's an alley behind my own Pets in Paradise Resort, and I'm the commercial one in front of everybody. I own two, two lots. And there's an alleyway back there. I'm concerned about, if the access parking, are there going to be parking back on the alleyways all the time if there's not room for them to park, is my concern? Being that they have trailers and boats and everything else. It's a concern to us deeply.
Mr. Morris.
Speaking of for alley, it's the same as any other right-of-way. Typically, people, there's not a lot of room in the alley for parking, so it would come down to Public Works and/or police feeling whether that's a traffic hazard for people parking there. There are other alleys in town that are posted in some instances as no parking. If this became an issue or is an issue, or they anticipate it becoming an issue, it's something that they could post as no parking in the alley. But at this point, it's just up to police and our Public Works Department to make that determination if it's, it needs to be marked as no parking.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Please state your name for the record.
James Gray, G-R-A-Y. I am the Director for the Partnership for Economic Development. I'm coming for you this morning in support of this project. As you know, Economic Development has done a housing assessment. It was completed last November, and I want to just bring up a couple points that Elliot Pollak brought up, and that's two is, one, that our, our housing mix is out of order in, meaning that we have a lot of single-family residents, but we don't have a lot of apartment complexes. And so, what happened in the pandemic, when we literally sold out as a community, when single-family houses were valuing 30%, over 30%, is that stock of houses that was used for rentals were sold at the highest rate, which is totally understandable. But that left a housing burden that is significantly higher than the state, meaning the people that are in the rental market, A, don't have access to apartment complexes like you're seeing now, and then, two, there's just not enough in the mix. So, I'm just here to state for the record, from Economic Development, we really support this project because it really fits a need, and I think it also has a really great location. A lot of times, we're rezoning spaces and trying to make things fit, and yet this fits really well in the zoning. So, I'm just here to speak in support of the project. That's all.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mr. Vice Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
We did receive an email yesterday, late, early this morning, and it was been distributed to the Commissioners that your, Diaz is here. Thank you.
Yes, we do have that. Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and bring it back to staff for your recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for land use action 23-3622 for a planned development rezone for 740, 730, 720, 710, 700, and 7, and 670 Delta Drive, and 681, 691, and 701 McCulloch Boulevard South, tract 2222, block 5, lots 1 through 9, from limited commercial C1 district to multiple-family planned development RM/PD district, allowing a maximum density increase from 20 units per acre to 41 dwelling units per acre, and allowing a five-foot encroachment into the required 15-foot front setback for vehicle parking along McCulloch Boulevard South. And again, as a reminder, this item will go to the City Council's February 14th meeting with the Planning Commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. This time, any further discussion by Commissioners or looking for a motion?
I'd just like to make a comment. And it goes back to the parking situation because I'm fully in favor of the high-density housing because we do have that need, and I think the conundrum is always parking because it does meet zoning. So, we really need to address, I think... it does meet zoning. So, we really need to address, I think, the zoning requirement for the parking. In this case, it does meet. So, just, just to give you that insight of why the parking is what it is.
Thank you, Ms. Melly. Any other?
Just a comment.
Ms. Ballard?
I, I fully support the need for apartments, new apartments in Lake Havasu, and I, I think this is a good plan. However, I have concern with the density. I think perhaps this is a little too dense for the neighborhood, being that the back of the property would be forty foot, could go up to forty foot in height. I think it's a little restrictive, and again, I have, even though the parking meets what is required, I think that parking is still an issue that would be better served if this property was developed, but in a less dense manner.
Any other comments or looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion. I motion to approve ID twenty-three thirty-six twenty-two, a request for planned development rezone for seven forty, seven thirty, seven twenty, seven ten, seven hundred, six seventy Delta Drive, and six eighty-one, six ninety-one, seven oh-one McCullough Boulevard South, tract two-two-two-two, block five, lots one through nine, from limited commercial C-one district to multifamily planned development R-M-P-D district, allowing a maximum density increase from twenty dwelling units per acre to forty-one dwelling units per acre, and allowing a five-foot encroachment into the required fifteen-foot front setback for vehicle parking abutting McCullough Boulevard South.
So, we have a motion to approve by Ms. Wilson?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. DeZerzo. Let's call for the vote.
Motion passes five to two.
Thank you. Good luck to you. Call to the public now for any comments or concerns. Seeing none, future meetings?
Mr. Vice Chair Commissioners, thank you. The meeting for February first has been canceled because the room's not available. The next regular meeting is scheduled for February fifteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Thank you, Commissioners. With that, I will call the meeting to adjournment.